Okay, let's start. It's called to order, city clerk.
This is the roll call for the council and authority. Councilmember, authority member Johnson, man.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Vice Mayor, Vice Chair Crist.
Present.
Mayor Chair Paris.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I move to excuse Councilwoman Johnson.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
It's unopposed. Ms. Saito.
Call to order, the housing authority meeting. City clerk, roll call please.
Roll call for the housing authority, authority member Harvey.
Present.
Man.
Present.
Smith.
Here.
Vice Chair Crist.
Present.
Chair Zetto.
Here.
We have a quorum.
I move to excuse Councilwoman Johnson.
She's not on it.
She's not on that one? Oh, okay, I'm sorry.
Okay, the invocation tonight is Chaplain Wade Little from the Los Angeles County Fire Department.
Our heavenly Father, we thank you that you're a holy and just, merciful God, as transcended above heavens, but yet you know our first moving needs and you love us individually. Or we do come and petition this council, or that you would be with them, you would guide them, that you would give them wisdom, that you would just bless them. Thank you for their service. Thank you for what they do. And, Lord, you'd be with their families, put heads of protection around them and their children. Or we do pray, as these times are tough and as our fiscal is uncertain at times, that you would guide those who are in leadership in our country to give them wisdom and to acknowledge you. Or you'd give, just give us this sermon as trying to figure out what to do. Or I thank you for this night, as we celebrate awards. Thank you for our sheriff's department. Or thank you for their service to this community and throughout the county. Thank you for our fire department. Thank you for them that put their lives on the line on a daily basis to keep us safe and to protect us and our property. Or we thank you for our military. Thank you for those who are here and well as abroad, who just pray for their families, as those who are overseas, give them comfort and peace, knowing that you are guiding and directing and protecting them. Or for those who have paid the ultimate sacrifice, I pray that you would just give comfort and peace upon those who were their teammates, as well as their families and children. Or that you would just inspire us as a country to take care of them, to love them, and provide for their needs. Or I pray for families here in Lancaster, in Palmdale. Or for our communities, that you would, that we'd be strong. Just thank you for this council and for the way that this community has gotten stronger and safer. So we do ask you to bless them, as they have their meeting tonight, and that they would depend on you most of all. We ask this in your Savior's name. Amen.
Question mark.
Please remain standing. Place your hand over your heart and repeat with me. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, moving to item two, the SOAR Student of the Month Award is to Gabriel Alharby. Did I pronounce that right? And is Gabriel here? Good.
Gabriel is our SOAR Student of the Month. As most of you know, every month we give a scholarship to the SOAR student, primarily because we're so in love with SOAR. And anybody that can excel at SOAR can excel anywhere. Because every one of those students is excelling beyond all of our expectations. They are a school that is 1% of the nation. That is just so remarkable to me that I, I'm just filled up with pride whenever I think of it. Gabriel received a number of academic distinctions, including attaining six wins of the 4O GPA award, receiving an ELC, what's that, what's an ELC?
It's for being the top 9% of the class.
The top what?
9% of the class.
9% of your class?
Yeah.
The CA-
Cassie.
Cassie, Excellence Award. What's that?
California.
Would you hear that, a perfect score? Who does that? The President's Education Program Award and a host of other accomplishments. He has a number of activities. Gabriel has demonstrated leadership abilities through his participation as founder and president of SOAR High School Rocketry Club. To be in a club, you go out and shoot off rockets. He's the yearbook editor and the Alpha Oda member. What's Alpha Oda?
It's a club that on the, sort of, ballpark.
He is committed to helping others through his contribution of time and volunteer service to various organizations. He will be first-generation college student in his family and plans to major in electrical engineering, theoretical physics. Wow, Gabriel is looking forward to a career in the technology industry. On behalf of the Lancaster City Council, I commend Gabriel for his outstanding scholastic accomplishments in community service. And you get $1,000. You know, almost all of the SOAR students, their parents have not completed college, so they're first-generation college students. Statistically, that is, that is very rare to see that group, that demographic, excel. It is an example, I think, to the entire nation, that when you have great expectations of people, they produce wonderful things. But that only happens with wonderful parents.
Parents.
Parents. Most of the kids are from single-parent families. I mean, the obstacles they have overcome is truly remarkable. And, I mean, every one of us should just, just well up with pride that that school is in our city. Thank you, Gabriel.
Thank you.
Let's take a picture.
You want me in the picture? No.
Absolutely. We know who got him here.
Okay, we have the Veterans Administration Award. The presenter is Tom Deaver from the Veterans Administration. And, Mr. Rosigian, do you have somebody to help him with that?
I'm sorry, sir, that was... Yeah, I think Mr. Deaver's going to present the council with an award, if I'm not mistaken.
That's correct. I'm Norm Andrews, I'm the director of the Veterans Home, and I'm here with Tom Deaver. Tom Deaver is the chairman of our resident council. And Tom has asked if I could read the appreciation letter from Secretary Gravitt to the city council, mayor, city manager and staff.
Thank you.
"A certificate of appreciation presented to the city of Lancaster in sincere appreciation for your ongoing support of our nation's veterans, specifically for installing a sidewalk on the south side of Avenue I to the William J. Pete Knight Veterans Home of California, Lancaster, thereby providing disabled veterans access to the wonderful city of Lancaster and helping to improve their quality of life."
Thank you very much.
Tom would like to present this to you and the council, and if we could get some pictures for our newsletter, that would be great. Tom is a Vietnam veteran, Air Force-
We're now going to have the Los Angeles Sheriff's Department's Meritorious Awards, and Captain Johnson will be helping with that. Is the captain here?
Mayor, council members, I appreciate this opportunity. This is one of those situations where Lancaster Station, as I've addressed this group before, is a very, very busy station. We have a lot of activity going on here. And we have a lot of teams in Lancaster Station that the general public generally doesn't see. These are the individuals that aren't necessarily answering your calls for service, but they're out there every day, going after our worst offenders. They're going after your robbers. They're going after our most hardcore criminals, every day of the week, at any time of the day. And I just thought it would be appropriate to recognize them in a public setting. Because what they've done over the last couple of years has been astonishing, to help reduce crime and fight crime. Last year, we were having quite a spike in robberies, specifically armed robberies at the beginning of the year. We saw a trend that was alarming, that we wanted to address. So we actually decided to develop a brand-new team, specifically formed to address armed robberies. They're referred to as our robbery suppression team. They've been phenomenal. And they're the team that, at the moment the robbery occurs, they are out there, starting the investigation and following all leads. They've had amazing success at finding these criminals, arresting them, and prosecuting them. So for that, we nominated them for one of our most prestigious department awards, and that's a meritorious service award. And again, I just want to thank you for the opportunity to present that to these individuals in this public setting. So can I have the robbery team come up here, under the guidance of Sergeant Eric Rolson? There are two detectives, Mark Donnell, is Mark, yep, and Rick Ellis. They're the primary detectives for all robberies that come through the station. And then the rest of the individuals are part of the team that go out and help them find the robbers. And again, they've had an amazing year. I thank you very much, from my standpoint. You guys have really helped make this community safer. You're very worthy of these awards, so thank you again. Eric, I'll read it out loud. "In recognition of your outstanding dedication, knowledge, and effectiveness as an honored member of the 2012 Lancaster robbery suppression team, your effort truly exemplifies a tradition of service, our core values, and department creed." So, on behalf of the sheriff, thank you very much. Very, very- Want to help me with these? Rick?
Thank you.
Mark?
Now, if they're knocking on your door, it's going to be a really bad day.
Can we get a housing authority a picture with them?
The second team, we, again, I appreciate you allowing us to recognize, is not one of the newer teams. They've been around and working in the city of Lancaster for over 12, 14 years. That's a Lancaster community appreciation team. And this team, the reason they're being recognized, again, one of the department's highest awards, meritorious service award, is because they're the go-to team all the time. I mean, I can't tell you, as far as having command of a station, to have such a resource is an extreme luxury. Because they're the team that, whenever I need additional resources deployed in any part of the city, they're the team that's willing to adjust. They come in at any hour that we ask them to, any day of the week. They're very, very flexible, depending on the need of the station. And it's that ongoing dedication, which is why we dedicate, recommended them for this award. Extremely worthy. I was very fortunate, last year, to have one of our sergeants that had worked this team as a deputy promote and remain. And that's Steve Owen. Steve, can you come up here? Now, this is the guy- This is the guy that every community should have as a supervisor. He is an unbelievable leader of men, of women. He will do whatever's asked, for the good of the community. And Lancaster is extremely, extremely fortunate to have such an individual out there, keeping the peace and making your community safer. Done an amazing job, so if we could, can I have the entire team come up and join your sergeant? Duriel Cruz, Tim Shank, Dave Keese, Mr. Gonzalez, Eric Jepson, Catalan, and then Mitch isn't here, right? Hubert's not here? There's a few that aren't here. This is the Lancaster team. Are we going to see anybody that's currently in this? People's not here, right? Larry? Okay. Again, so let me give you guys, real quick, "In recognition of your outstanding efforts while assigned to Lancaster Station Community Appreciation Program, during the summer months of 2012, you and your team selfishly adjusted your work schedule to assist in the combating the crime rate in the city of Lancaster. Your team arrested 390 criminals utilizing search warrants, probation and parole searches, and saturation patrol. Your work ethic, leadership, teamwork, collaborative approach to fighting crime are truly commendable. Your efforts truly exemplify a tradition of service, our core values, and department creed." And I just want to highlight one thing. That was only over the summer months. That's a lot of people that went to jail in a short period of time. And again, it's all due to their relentless effort in keeping this community safe. So again, thank you very much. Mr. Robb? This is your Lancaster team. Thank you very much. Let's get a photograph. Thank you. Joe, can we get the family members in the picture too? Have them take a picture? And just one final thing to the, to all of you. The, none of this would be possible without your support, mayor and council members, for funding these positions. You definitely get your money's worth out of these groups, and they keep working for you each and every day. So thank you again for the support.
Okay, city manager, anything to be removed?
No, sir.
What about CA1 and CA2?
You could take, we do have your nominees here, if you would like to take that out of order first.
Okay, let's do that. Are we swearing them in today?
The commissioners are already on the commission, the ones you're reappointing, but the MOA folks that are here, we are prepared to swear in for CA2, if they're available.
I don't have the MOA folks listed. Oh, yeah, here we do. Okay, great. Okay, CA1, we're going to reappoint, well, I'm nominating for reappointment, for the Architectural Design Planning Commission. Come on down when I call your name and, well, do I need to do that?
Yeah, absolutely. You can if you like.
Okay, we'll get the picture anyway, yeah. Russell Bartlett, April Bartlett, Catherine Carlson, Amanda Haas, Andrew Mercy, and Tim Wiley, for the Architectural and Design Planning Commission. Any of them here?
I don't know if any of those are here. I did see a couple of the others. They're being reappointed, so.
Okay. Criminal Justice Commission, Mark Brown, Newton Shalat, Tim Fuller, Cherie Pickens, Lee Smith, and David Viera. Newt's here. Out of all those commissioners, that says something. We should make him chairman. Who is the chairman? David Viera? And the Lancaster Neighborhood Revitalization Commission, or Vitalization Commission, is Stephen Derryberry, Howard Harris, Angela Hearn, Michelle Kiefer, Linda Lawson, and Lisa Moulton. Lisa's here. And the other stalwart, the one we can depend on, Lisa Moulton. I won't make you come down, unless you want to. Thank you. Is there a motion to reappoint? So moved. Second?
Second that.
Let's vote. And it's unanimous. Moving on to the MOA appointments. Nadia Dickinson Aquino, Jane Frye, Michelle Lance, Ben Meish, did I pronounce that right? Liel Stallworth, Lori Young, are going to be the directors of the Lancaster Museum and Public Art Foundation Board of Directors. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? None? Okay.
So mayor, we could swear them in too, if you'd like.
What?
We could swear these folks in.
Yeah, let's have the city clerks swear them in. Okay.
Oh, we can, we're going to do a second.
No, she's going to come swear you in, okay?
Jane Frye. Does all mean swear. Support, defend the Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. Against all enemies, foreign and domestic. And I bear true faith and allegiance. The Constitution of the United States. And the Constitution of the State of California. I do. Or a purpose of evasion. I will well and faithfully discharge. Let's do this long, which I am about to enter. Thank you. Thank you very much. Okay, thanks.
Okay, we're entrusting the jewel of Lancaster to you. I'm absolutely serious about that. It's the jewel of Lancaster. We are absolutely committed and in love with that facility. Thank you. Okay, turning it over to Ms. Saito.
Do we have a motion and a second to adopt the housing authority minutes?
So moved.
Second that.
And the minutes are adopted. I'll turn the meeting back over to Mayor Paris.
Thank you. Moving on to successor agency actions, new business, item one. Any cards?
No cards.
You want to wave the staff report?
Yes.
Okay, is there a motion?
Motion to approve SAMB1.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, moving on to SAMB2.
No speaker cards.
Want to wave?
Wave?
Motion approved. Motion to approve SA NB2.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Any speaker cards on the minutes?
None.
Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
So moved.
Second.
Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay, the consent calendar.
We do have a speaker card on CC4.
Okay, let's remove that. Is there a motion to approve the rest of the consent?
Motion to approve the consent calendar is currently comprised?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. It's approved unanimously. Mr. Nieto.
Knee, eight, toe. Anyway, so I'm just kind of asking into this.
I got two right, didn't I? Two out of three. Hey, that's a B.
Two out of three syllables. So if I'm reading this correctly, this is standard procedure according to state law, correct? Anything that, any unclaimed checks after a year are transferred over to the city general fund?
I think that's accurate, isn't that right?
That is correct. These are checks that have been sent to the people and have been uncashed. And are under $15, so the total's $330. That is correct.
Is there any similarity of this to the state comptroller's office for unclaimed properties?
No, theirs is millions of dollars. Ours is 300.
I recently went through a claim with the state comptroller's office myself, so CC4 here kind of piqued my attention a little bit. I'm like, oh, that's familiar. I wonder if this is, if this is anything like what I went through. Okay, yeah, I just wanted to ask into this, see, if I read this correctly, that it's state policy and, what the heck, offer a suggestion that the city perhaps consider going its own way on this, whatever would be in the best interest of the city, because just from my own experience, one year can maybe not be enough from time to time, even though it's a very small amount. One year can perhaps be not quite, it can be inconvenient to lose your claim after a year, even if it is only $15 or less. So just, I'm just offering that. Yeah, that's all.
Thank you. Move over to approve CC4. Second? Is there a second? Let's vote. It's unanimous. Okay. Moving on to new business. Any speaker cards on NB1?
Good evening, Mayor Paris and council members. I stand before you tonight with what I believe is a win-win situation for the city and for our community members. The city of Lancaster recently opened the Lancaster Museum of Art and History on May 5th, and prior to that, the council approved an entrance fee for anybody that, an admission fee rather, for the museum. The city also recently received a tax bill for that property in the amount of approximately $50,000 annually. We, after some research, we found an exemption that by eliminating admission fees for MOA, the city would be eligible to file an exemption for the taxes on that facility with a benefit of $41,000 approximately a year that we would save in annual taxes. On the flip side of that, we also feel like it's a benefit for the community members who no longer have to pay admission to the facility. We will continue to charge for rentals and large group tours, but the facility will now revert to a suggested donation in lieu of admission fees. So it is our recommendation that you adopt resolution 1305, and eliminate the admission fees for the Museum of Art and History.
Thank you. We have one speaker card, Mr. Nieto. I'm up to an A now, aren't I? I guess if you average it out, what, a B+?
A-, still gotta get the intricacies of the Spanish pronunciation.
I'll work on it.
Okay, so I wanted to speak in absolute wholehearted support of this. Goodness, I, like, I saw this on the agenda and I was just like, yes! Very happy to see this. This has been one of my concerns. $5, and this is, as you say, it's the crown jewel of our community. Absolutely, I adore the fact that we have a really high-quality museum of art. I'm impressed by the displays and exhibits that have been at this museum. So it's been my desire that the whole community have access to it, and there are people for whom $5 actually would prevent them from being able to enjoy it. So I'm absolutely happy to see this. I speak in full-hearted support of changing over the status of museums so that the whole community can enjoy it. Thank you guys for doing this.
Motion to adopt resolution number 13-1 or 05.
Second.
Before you tonight, would rescind sunset provisions on two of our commissions, Criminal Justice and Architectural Design, and the position of deputy mayor. As the council is well aware, these and other commissions are discretionary and advisory for the council, and in practical terms, the council can amend, rescind, or do anything to the commissions at any time. They serve, as do the deputy mayors, at the pleasure of the mayor and the city council. This cleans up the provisions in our municipal code and puts all the commissions on the same footing without a sunset clause and subject to the will of the mayor and the council. So with this action, it would eliminate that one provision for those two councils, those two commissions and the position of deputy mayor.
Thank you. Thank you. Any questions? Mr. Reeves?
Mayor, Mayor Paris, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. As we well know, there's too many ordinances and laws in this country. Sunset provisions offer an opportunity to discuss the effectiveness of a law or ordinance. If I'm correct, the ordinance creating the commissions and deputy mayor positions were approved with the stipulation that they were sunset provisions. I favor keeping the sunset provision in these ordinances. I don't think that by removing them, we create permanent commissions. And you say here that it's at the discretion of the council, well, it would be at the discretion if there's a sunset provision in the ordinance. Another thing on this, this discussion of this, I was reading on the agenda, which everybody has, and it says as a practical matter, sunset provisions for discretionary or advisory commissions and positions created by elected, so on, so on. This is an editorial remark, this doesn't belong into the discussion of the ordinance. Somebody's giving their opinion, and as a practical matter, who says it's a practical matter? So next time, maybe before we editorialize, we think about this and just put the ordinance down here, but nevertheless, I do not favor removing these sunset provisions from the ordinances. Thank you.
Thank you. Any discussion? Is there a motion?
Move to introduce ordinance number 986.
Is there a second?
I'll second that.
Let's vote. All in favor? Well, let's just vote. It's unanimous. No action on the financing authority, no action on the power authority. I'm gonna move the city manager and city clerk's announcements to after executive session. Just as a, as a point of clarification, on the dog bite ordinances, after the Neighborhood Vitalization Commission has worked on it, it seems to me that there really isn't any need to amend the ordinance, and I'm simply directing the city manager and the sheriff's department to begin the process of notifying property owners when there is an issue regarding dog bites on their property. If the council has any problems with that, I don't imagine there is, but if there is, put a, an item on next meeting's agenda and we can deal with it. Okay? But as of today, they're gonna start notifying them. I also want to announce that I want Cassandra Harvey, the two deputy mayors, Cassandra Harvey and Kadez Eto'o, to pick one other person to begin the discussion of whether or not we should be looking at districting how we do our elections, and if so, how we put that before the voters or not put it before the voters, how we deal with it. But I think that it's an item we have to look at. I would suggest you contact Stephen Derryberry, see if he's interested in working with you on that, and then as soon as you're prepared to report back to the council, report back to the council. And with that, we're going to adjourn for a short intermission while we go into executive session.
City attorney. Mr. Vice Mayor, members of the council, the council met in closed session under government code section 54956.9A concerning the items listed on the agenda. Direction was given concerning Waterhouse versus Lancaster, Miracle Star Women's Recovery Community. No other action was taken, oh, and also on Doe versus Lancaster, no other action was taken.
City manager.
I'd just like to ask Rhonda to report on the Martin Luther King Weekend. It was a very successful event. She might take that opportunity to do that.
Thank you. We were very pleased to encourage and support over 30 projects throughout the Antelope Valley. We even had a couple take place in our neighboring city this year, and there were over 2,000 volunteers that volunteered their time and energy and supplies and efforts to make this day's, this year's Martin Luther King Day of Service a huge success. So we were very, very pleased and look to make it bigger and better next year.
Did a wonderful job, wonderful job.
Thank you. I'd like to specifically thank staff Angela Riley and Candace Curran for heading up that program.
City clerk.
Ladies and gentlemen, this is the time for you to address the city council on any items that are not on the agenda. You'll find speaker cards at the back of the council chambers. We ask that you fill them out completely and print as clearly as possible so that if necessary, the city council, the city manager, and city staff will be able to get in touch with you. As much as we appreciate your request to make comments before your three minutes begin, please understand your time begins when your name is announced. Individual speakers are limited to three minutes each. If you choose to ask a question during this time, any response by council will not extend your three minutes. When you approach the podium, you will see three lights. The green light comes on when your time begins, the yellow light comes on when you have 30 seconds remaining, and the red light comes on when your time is up. We ask that you be considerate of the allotted time to allow other speakers to have their three minutes as well. State law prohibits the city council from taking action on items not on the agenda, and your matter will be referred to the city manager. Thank you.
Michael Reeves.
Vice Mayor Chris, council, staff, ladies and gentlemen. Last week, I attended the AVTA hearing held right in this chamber. We had two people from the city, two people from AVTA, and three citizens. And what did I learn? Well, I learned that most of the financing for the AVTA comes from the federal government. It's the primary source. I learned that there's long response times for bus lines, 30 minutes and 60 minutes. I saw the, on the map, the length of the route from Palmdale East Side to Lancaster City Park. And I, we were informed about the problems with wheelchairs during peak hours in which the wheelchair people have to, are asked to get another bus. That being said, on Saturday, I had occasion to go down below on the 14th freeway, and I passed through Santa Clarita, and what did I see in front of me? I saw shuttle buses. Now, I've mentioned this so many times, and I know you're tired of hearing about it, but if Santa Clarita can have shuttle buses, as diverse and widespread as they are, we could have a shuttle bus going down 10th Street West. Since the meeting last week that I attended here, I again saw empty AVTA buses that weren't full during peak hours. I mean, they had two people in them. So I'm calling again for shuttle buses on east-west routes in the city. And of course, you would have to retain a large bus on Sierra Highway, but I think it would be, benefit the citizens of this community if we had a more frequent service than 30 minutes and 60 minutes. Thank you.
Carl Sunstrom?
First off, I'd like to say my wife made me come here. The problem that we're having is with skateboarding in the streets. I understand from my wife calling the sheriff's department that she was told that there's no law against skateboarding in the street. As long as those who are doing the skateboarding will move out of your way. The problem we've had in our neighborhood and have had for several years is that on the corner of 10th Street West and West Holgwin Street, which is the first street north of H8, on the corner, sometimes there are up to 12 teenagers out there skateboarding in the street, and they have, I don't know what it's called, but it's approximately four and a half to five feet long and 12 to 16 inches high with legs on each end and is welded together and is made out of metal. And it's made for them to jump up onto with their skateboards and jump off of, which is fine, but the problem is, is that they locate this thing in the lane, the eastbound lane, traffic lane, as you're driving down the street. They refuse to move out of your way, they refuse to move it, they expect you to go around them, even when they don't have this thing out in the street and they're out there skateboarding and they see you coming, they just stand there and they stare at you, and they expect you to go around them, and they will not move out of your way. I don't know what can be done about it, if anything, but I just wanted to bring it to the attention of the city council, that really something needs to be done, because we've called several times, we've called code enforcement, and it's my understanding by talking to one of the code enforcement agents, that he actually went out to the house there and confiscated one of these things, and apparently they either got it back or they built another one, or that they place out in the middle of the street. Sometimes also they'll place a big box out into the street and do the same thing, jump onto it and jump off with their skateboards. Again, I wouldn't have much of a problem with this if they would just move when you're driving down the street. The other night, my wife and I were driving down the street and this thing was sitting there. I stopped the car, got out, picked it up and threw it onto the sidewalk. At that particular time, three teenagers came up, and one of them used probably the most foul language that you can imagine, didn't look to be over 18 years old, but made the statement that, you know, we need to go around them, we shouldn't be moving that thing out of the street. that thing out of the street. And, um, I just argued with them and told them that they're not supposed to be in the street. The thing should not be in the street. It's for vehicle traffic. So, uh, anyway, I've said my piece, and, uh, hopefully whatever the council can do, the council can do. Thank you.
Thank you for coming. Jason, can you have someone look into that? Can you make sure that if they're not in compliance, that we remove that?
Absolutely.
Because that shouldn't be happening.
Good evening. I'm Michelle Egberts, founder and executive director of AVE's Kern Second Chance. My organization provides long-term post-release services, reentry services for the men, women, and youth that are coming home. In March of two thousand and eleven, I came before you regarding the group home ordinance and the less than six sober living homes. I have continued concerns about that as it was implemented in, uh, two thousand and seven. This ordinance has been found to be facially discriminatory and unconstitutional by the federal government, US Housing Urban Development, the State of California Housing and Community Development, and Shelter Partnership, a nonprofit agency also hired by the state to investigate the city regarding the group home business license ordinance. The ordinance has been found to be facially discriminatory again by the federal government and unconstitutional by the state because it targets handicapped people. For example, the city may not ask handicapped persons, what are their specific disabilities. Another example, the city imposes constraints that impose barriers to affordable housing. I've been watching a case very closely. Last week, a superior court judge advised the city of Lancaster that it needs to seriously consider settlement in the Miracle Star versus city of Lancaster case, largely based on the group home license. The entity lost three point six million dollars based on the ordinance. The case law allows for a three times multiplier. As such, the loss potential for the city is ten point eight million, with nearly five million in lost interest as well, making the loss potential to the city in the near, in the sixteen million range. I am demanding that the city to find out when the city will rescind or modify. We need these homes for these individuals coming home that are receiving treatment inside the facilities, whether they be prison or local custody. If you want to combat crime, we have to make a commitment to treat the, to treat the addict, to cut the crime rate. Therefore, I'm asking the city that it reconsider pulling this ordinance, assessing it, and readdressing it at a later time. Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, staff, fellow citizens. I have good news, I have bad news. The good news is I have a solution for the bad news. The bad news is the city works department did maintenance on a curb down the street from my house the next day. The water tasted like dirt. It was eight degrees the night before. I thought I had a broken water main. So I waited for the water to come bubbling up in the front yard, and it never did. Finally, on Friday of that week, I called one of my neighbors. She said, my water smells funny too. I said, does it smell like dirt? She says, I don't know what dirt smells like. I have older brothers. I do know what dirt smells like. Um, it turns out, after I contacted the waterworks on the following Monday morning, that it's not uncommon for the water to smell and taste like dirt after the public works department does work on a street, because they knock dirt into the water line. And all it takes is the water quality agent from the waterworks going out and flushing the line. Problem solved. Twelve minutes, twelve minutes, that guy had the problem solved. Here's the good news. Call them before you do the work. Tell them you're gonna go out and do the work. Ask somebody in the neighborhood if you can check their water when you're done with the work. And then, if it smells or tastes like dirt, have the waterworks come out and flush the line. It's that simple. It's really easy. Thank you.
Thank you, Teresa. Mr. Bozian.
Yes, sir.
You have, uh, a presentation for us?
Uh, yeah, under city manager announcements, just one. Um, last Saturday, we had a remarkable showing for Martin Luther King Junior Day of Service. I think, um, Angela Riley, Candice, um, Rhonda Hergriff, Public Works, all the people out there. Uh, we have thirty projects and almost two thousand volunteers. We have a short video that highlights, I think, and encapsulates, uh, one of the best examples of volunteerism, and this has to do with the Lancaster Community Shelter. Uh, Andre's worked hard to put this together, so with your permission, I'd like to show it.
Yes, please.
We're here in front of Grace Resource Center to give you a tour of the amount of work that has been done over Martin Luther King Weekend. Let's go check it out. This pathway was built for us this morning by a group of, um, high school students from Grace Chapel, and this is to help when our guests come in in the evening and put their, um, belongings in the locker. This will allow it so that we're not killing the grass, but also that they're not having to walk through mud and dirt, um, when the weather gets bad. This shading was built, um, for us so that when the men come outside and they need a place to relax, um, once we've had the intake process, it gives them shading and a place to, um, hang out so that they're not out here in the blazing sun. This room is our primary men's cot room, and we have, um, a women's room that's exactly the same size. Um, we can hold up to one hundred and twenty people in the shelter at any given night. And what you'll see around the perimeter of the room, um, is protection for the wall, because when the cots get slammed up against the wall, it shifts the paint, it shifts the walls themselves. And so we had a group that was combined from Antelope Valley Christian Center and Central Christian, and they came in and they have started to put up borders to protect the walls today. Goodwill Plumbing has spent the past three weeks putting, um, new showers in for us, and then there was a group of volunteers today from the community that repainted both our men and women's bathrooms. This area is being donated to us by Central Christian, and it is our, will be, our new entryway walkway. So the twenty-two-year-old carpet has been ripped out and it's being replaced with a wood floor. So you guys, there's a lot of stuff that happened all day today. Um, we had another group from Grace Chapel that came in and deep cleaned our kitchen and painted our, um, kitchen white for us today. We had another group of, um, volunteers who came in today, and they repainted our fire, um, lines and our parking spots and handicapped parking for us. So it just looks cleaner out here for us. When Grace Resource Center first took over the shelter, there was no place for kids to play. So one of our priorities has been to just really develop a good family and children's program. So that's what part of all of this is about. This pergola was completed by the Rotary Club a couple of months ago. The pergola over in the corner was completed by Central Christian for us. Desert Vineyard, um, church had a huge, um, work party out here today, leveling out the dirt and getting rid of the rocks, and they'll be continuing the Martin Luther King, um, project over the next month or so, as they, um, helped put in sprinklers and sod, and will actually have a playground area, um, all the way around here. Back in this area, it's not as obvious what people have done. Um, but we had teams and teams of people going through every single one of our family units, cleaning the vents, cleaning the blinds, cleaning the floors. All of these family areas, um, were deep cleaned today, and the artwork that you see on the walls were done by students at Eastside High School. We, um, we asked them to do an art tour for us with a theme of a hope for the future. So all the artwork back here is done, was donated by Eastside High School. Any given time, we can have anywhere from upwards of twelve to fourteen families in the units. Because we can create this kind of privacy, we're actually one of the very few shelters, actually in the state of California, that can't take single fathers with their children. So we're excited about that. But each family, each family unit has two bedrooms and a bathroom, and so, and we get really full. Um, we, if it's a small enough family, then we will have one family on one side and one family on the other. So that is everything that happened at the shelter today. We had upwards of approximately a hundred and fifty volunteers between here and there was a huge group of folks from the Antelope Christian Center and Desert Vineyard walking all over the neighborhood, um, cleaning up trash and brush, um, all around this area just to make it look prettier.
Reporting from Grace Resource Center, we're help for today, it's help for tomorrow. I am Carla DeLeon.
Andre, great job.
Yeah.
Just like to comment that, you know, the, our faith-based community, the desert Christians, the Central Christian, Grace Chapel, uh, the Desert Vineyard, all of them that get together to help us, the high school districts, you know, under the leadership of Concepcion Harris, which was at our criminal justice, along with, uh, Chris Johnson. This is what they put together from the Criminal Justice Commission. So, uh, they've done a wonderful job, and, uh, if it wasn't for Henry Hearns that actually put this all together, uh, originally, uh, wonderful jobs. Great jobs for the Parks and Rec. Anyone have anything? Ron? Sandra? Kitty? Ken? I'm gonna turn it over to Chair Zado.
The housing authority meeting is adjourned until February twelfth, two thousand thirteen at five PM.
And the city council meeting is adjourned till, uh, Tuesday, February twelfth at, uh, five PM. Thank you.